To call the Peoria Public School District 150 Board of Education meeting for September 28, 2015 to order. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mrs. Butler?
Here.
Mr. Blough?
Here.
Mrs. Kastig?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first order of business this evening is the community recognition. And tonight's award will go to, a community award will go to an organization called CAR, or Concerned African American Retirees. CAR is an organization of approximately thirty individuals dedicated to improving the social, economic, and educational conditions in Peoria. CAR has adopted Manual Academy and works with the Manual Principal to assist in areas of priority to improve student education and character. I would like to invite Mr. Al Hooks to the podium to speak about CAR and the services it offers to our students and to our community. Welcome, Mr. Hooks.
Thank you. Good evening to the chairperson, superintendent that's walking back here, and the rest of the board members. We from CAR are honored to receive this recognition. CAR is an organization that started around 2009, and the reason we got together, each individual realized we could do more working as an organization than individually to help improve the community. Some of our members are seated here. I'd like you to stand, please, just so everyone can see you. And you'll notice we're all attired similarly. The organization CAR, as stated, is dedicated to three things: the social, education, and the other one. But we've concentrated on the educational aspects. And the reason we have, one of the things we all understand, for our youth, education is the new currency of the 21st century. And we really understand that if our youth don't receive very good educations, their prospects for a good life is diminished. So that is why we have chosen education. As stated earlier, we've adopted Manual, and we've worked with Manual for the past five, six years. And I'd just like to share with you how we work with Manual. One of the first things we do each year is start our, establish the annual support program. CAR, along with the principal, and this year we're working with Principal Young in the same way, we ask her, what are your priorities and how can we assist you the most in accomplishing your goals? We're in the process of finalizing that with Principal Young today. Some of the things we've done in the past, though, we had a Six Sigma Registration project where we completed it and implemented it, and it did have a positive impact on the registration process at Manual. We participated in the Reading Buddy Program at Jefferson, so we sometimes branch out. We've had members who were substitute teachers at Manual for entire semesters. We participate routinely in the APC. One year, to help get ready for school, we painted lockers. When we look at the eighth grade academy, seventh, eighth grade academy graduation, we've cooked the food, served the parents and students, we do whatever we can to help foster an environment of support at Manual. We've also had an at-risk mentoring program at Manual, and we've participated in the advisory program as a mentor program. You know, we look at our efforts and they're done in a selfless way, but the joy you get sometimes, and most of us have had this happen, we will have contact with a student and two years later, we'll forget who they are. But to be stopped in the hall and hear some young man who, when you dealt with him as a sophomore freshman, really didn't have goals and you thought he never really changed, come up to you and say, "Mr. Hooks, you don't remember me, do you?" Generally, I say, "No, I'm old, I forget people." But when you hear a young man say, "My grades are X, I want to go to college," frankly, when they say it, first time I challenge, say, "Look, are you blowing smoke?" But we have seen students who have changed over the years, not directly because of us, but we have helped guide them along the way. So being from CAR and for the rest of the members, we thank you for the recognition and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Part of my script says, "On behalf of the Board of Education, Dr. Karat has a token of our appreciation for what you do for our students and families in the district." And we appreciate the work that you do for all of our students and family, especially at Manual. Thank you. The next awards and recognition would go to recognition of Peoria's Finest Teacher, which is an ongoing recognition that we do here at the Board. Your hair is different. I didn't recognize that.
It is. I have allotted to go natural. I gave up.
I know. Wow, okay.
Good evening. Peoria's Finest Teacher is a monthly recognition that we are sponsoring for those members of PFT that go above and beyond, exemplify best practices in teaching, and will reach out to the community and parents to be involved in our schools. The teachers in this district work so hard to serve the children and families of Peoria each day, and we want to showcase this positive effort. We want to thank our winner's principal, Cindy Clark, and any faculty, friends, and family that are here in support of this month's winner. Our nominator of this month's winner is Lori Harper. Come up, Lori. And this month's Peoria's Finest Teacher is Tracy Ziegenhorn at Richwoods High School. Congrats, come up, Tracy.
Special teachers can and do make a difference every day in the lives of children and families. This is especially true of Tracy Ziegenhorn. She works tirelessly for her classes and her after-school tutoring program. She always shows such kindness and compassion for each student. She wants her students to have every advantage in learning whether they have an IEP or not. And this is why I nominated Tracy Ziegenhorn.
Thank you. I've been teaching for twenty-five years and I can't imagine doing anything else. I'm very fortunate to be at Richwoods. I get to work within the special ed department and the math department, which are both awesome departments, and I have the amazing support of Ms. Clark. So, thank you very much.
I can just speak for myself and on behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations and thank you to all of our special teachers. Anyone else have one? Okay. Announcements? Any announcements tonight? I think that's the next one. Is it Mark is supposed to?
You can call Mark.
Okay. Sadekso update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent Karat, Board President Ross, and all of the distinguished board members, thank you for allowing us to come up and share with you some of the accomplishments. Thank you, Chris. Some of the accomplishments that we've had in this district. And I'd like to, just on a personal note, say, I too have gone all-natural this year. It's working for me. As your food service provider, Sadekso, along with all of your food service staff, are very focused and committed to providing quality, innovative programs, supporting student achievement, and we really appreciate the partnership that we have with this district. When we began, we started several new initiatives or improved initiatives within Peoria School District 150, one of which is breakfast in the classroom. We now have eighteen of our schools that provide breakfast in the classroom, fourteen of which are grab-and-go style that we're switching over to. By doing this, we've increased the annual meals that we provide to the students of Peoria School District 150 by four-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand breakfasts every year. I think the first year was maybe a quarter million, and so we're pushing a half a million. We're going to get there. By doing that, we've attracted some attention from the USDA, from the Midwest Dairy Council. We actually had a video filmed at our Keller Primary School where they followed a kid from home, onto the bus, to school, through the grab-and-go breakfast line, interviewed teachers, principals, custodians. So, we've attracted attention because of the good things that we've accomplished here in Peoria. Another is onsite cooking. That was pretty much our mission when I first came here, was to improve quality of the lunch program here in Peoria. We now have nine kitchens, well, I'll call them kitchens, they were just kind of boxes. They had a three-compartments sink and a home refrigerator that are now full-scale cooking operations. We've started nine of them since I've come. We've got two more that we're about to start. We've got Franklin that's coming on Tuesday, they'll begin cooking for their kids on location, and then Jamison right after that. And we've got a handful of others that will be doing that. Through that quality initiative, as well as some of the products that we offer that perhaps weren't offered before, we've grown the lunch meals by about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand a year. Now, understand, that is in an environment where we've rolled out HETHCA, which is the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, where I'm sure you've all read in the media about all of the downside to that. Well, we've had just an upside. We've actually, in this environment of you've got to have the healthy whole wheat products and what have you, we've increased our participation. We've increased the number of meals that we've served. Those two facts, increased breakfast, increased lunches, has afforded the district the opportunity to reinvest those reimbursements we get from the USDA, from the state, back into our facility. So, it's kind of self-perpetuating. By growing our numbers, we're able to do more for the kids. The summer meal program is another expansion that we did, and I think we had shared that information with you a little earlier, but we were able to quadruple the number of meals that were served this past summer, both breakfast and lunch, through the partnerships that we developed with many of the community members, everybody from the Park District to the Peoria Housing Authority, Friendship House, Salvation Army, and a slew of others, and several faith-based organizations. That will continue this coming year, and we hope to grow that. One of our newest initiatives was not breakfast and lunch, but staffing. Gabby Klein and myself met with Cindy Garst back in May with the idea of how could we work with some of the STEP and the PAT program to try and incorporate some of those adults and kids into our program? Well, we found out that we were going to have a bit of a shortage this year with the transportation folks not coming and being a part of our program, so this accelerated the process. We now have, we started one student over at, one employee from the program over at Jamison at the beginning of the year. In September, we started five more, and Gabby's got two more starting now. So, it's what I call a win-win. It's great for the district, it's great for the kids, and we benefit from this because we've got the hands that we need to do a good job serving kids. So, this is something we're going to continue to expand on, and we're pretty excited about. Our newest initiative is over at Peoria High. We have a pilot that we've just started last week. It's a part of the CACFP, the Child and Adult Feeding Program, that we did a pilot with on last year. And we've literally got something, we've branded as the Peoria Power Pack. It is a meal for after-school, it's fuel for after-school. It's available in various points. We're out in the foyer, we do about two-hundred of these meals out in the foyer, and it's a sack meal. It's grab-and-go. It's something they can run and run to their activity, run to study hall, whatever it might be. As well as all the, a lot of the, both activities and sports, we have coolers for the coaches, for the chess club, for dance, what have you, that they come and get, and so theirs is ready to go. So, they can take it to the mat room, they can take it to the field, whatever, and we've got a meal for those kids. So, it's fuel for that afternoon hour. And we're doing about four-hundred, four-hundred-and-fifty of those a day. We're also supplying on Saturdays meals for the teams as they go to an away game or home game, whatever it might be. I think we did about a hundred-and-twenty of those this weekend. We received, I applied for and received, two grants. It's going to be either thirty-five or forty-five hundred dollars that will pay for some of the labor. This is a pilot that we're running at Peoria High School right now. We'll end up rolling it out to Manual High School as well, but we've been able to procure some funds to help do this experiment and figure out what the labor and how to best orchestrate this process. And even for the summer program, we got a five-thousand-dollar grant that I was able to give to Tawny to offset some of the school's expenses, get some activities, supplies and what have you. So, we've gotten support from No Kid Hungry and Share Our Strength. And talking about getting some notoriety, Share Our Strength and No Kid Hungry will be visiting us to look at our grab-and-go breakfast program. They had given us support in grant form, and we're letting them come in and see. They're going to visit our Lincoln K-8 school on the twenty-first of October. They're here in town for an event, and they're going to see that and kind of use as an example how other schools can be successful in rolling out breakfast-in-the-classroom programs. But I'd like to thank all the folks who have contributed to our success here in Peoria. Everyone from the principals that we've worked with as we roll out these programs, to all of our staff, in particular, right now, the three ladies in the bake shop over at Peoria High School that are doing a knockout job, putting all this together. I'm going in every day and saying, "Okay, how'd it work? What can we change?" And, you know, we don't just employ their arms and their legs and what have you, they're putting their minds into it on how we can do a better job and how we can improve quality. So, I really enjoy that. I think one of the things that really makes it great, too, is this gentleman over here, Michael McKenzie. I walk into his office many times and say, "Hey, listen, I got an idea. I want to reach in your back pocket, pull out your wallet, and see what we got here." So, he has been the man who has helped fund these efforts, and we sit down and meet as a group with Mark Wilcox and others to figure out what is the best way to utilize the dollars that we have to make improvements in this district. But it's truly a collaborative district. I appreciate all the support we get from our Board, from all the staff here, and just on a personal note, I want to say I really, I'm proud to be a part of this district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excuse me, I have a question, question for you before you leave.
Just a couple of things I wanted, first of all, I wanted to say, I certainly hope the pilot at Peoria High goes well and can spread out to other schools because that is really important. Some of those kids eat lunch at ten forty-five and eleven in the morning and then go right into practice and don't get home till seven or eight at night, so I think that's great.
Absolutely.
The other thing I wanted to repeat is, because this came up at our last board meeting, that someone questioned why we're putting all this money into kitchen equipment for some of these schools. And I didn't have all the facts to back it up, so I didn't say anything, but we are trying to get full kitchens going in as many schools as we can, so it's onsite cooking. So, we have nine, does that include the high schools?
That's just schools that typically had not cooked in. So, nine of them had not cooked before are now cooking. We've got two more coming on in just the next few weeks.
Great.
We've got more on the agenda for this year.
Great. And that's a great thing because they aren't having meals that sit from nine in the morning until they eat them, and it's being cooked onsite.
Yeah, one of our, I'll always remember Vicki over at Valeska, our kitchen manager, when we started up Valeska Cooking On-Site. It was a summertime thing, so not a lot of people were around, but she would call me every day. "Mark, those are the best chicken nuggets I've ever had. Mark, that was the best pizza I've ever, Mark, that was..." You know, they gain that control over that product, instead of us cooking it off at a high school, sealing it up, and crossing our fingers, and everything's great as it gets out the door. They really appreciate being able to do a better job for their kids.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have, I have a question. Anybody else have a question?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Carr.
Just a quick question. I noticed that some children from like Heinz and Glen Oak, like on Fridays, they have like a sack of goodies to take home. What is that particular program?
We're actually not a part of that. When I first came here, I started connecting with all different kinds of folks because typically I've done something called a backpack program, where we work with a food shelf, we have our volunteer force, we get in, you know, big pelletized amounts of food, and we distribute it to schools and it goes home with kids. This is, I actually met the woman in my calling around and trying to network with folks, I met the woman who starts this up. It's a faith-based organization. She hooks up principals in schools with churches and creates that alliance where the church then supports by having what they call a snack pack. And so, they're providing that food for several of the schools, but not all of them. But it's a great, it's a great program. What I wasn't able to find was those deep pockets and the ability to supply all that food, because we could use quite a bit if we were to start a backpack program here in Peoria.
Well, just, I just wanted to ask a quick question about the different timings. Someone mentioned, I think you mentioned kids having lunch, some of them at ten, ten, ten-thirty in the morning, and other kids who have to wait until one, one fifteen, one twenty. Is there, is there anything between breakfast and that late lunch that, and I know that some of the schools and teachers are asking parents to bring snacks in between, and that's okay, but I was just wondering about the timing there. Is it because of the number of children, or?
I think what you're speaking to is kind of a school-by-school staffing issue, or not staffing, but scheduling issue. So, based on the physical building that they have, number of staff, number of kids, what have you, that's not something that food service orchestrates on when breakfast is going to happen, when lunch is going to happen. What the USDA dictates, that there needs to be a two-hour gap between those two, so between breakfast and between lunch. As far as another option to supply food for kids, that's something we could look into. I know one of the things that we're interested in moving forward on either next year or the following is a fruit and vegetable grant. That is something that is kind of two-pronged. It provides fruits and vegetables to kids within the school day, but it also provides an educational component to try and help kids kind of get used to eating fruits and vegetables as a snack. I've had a lot of fun with it in some other districts, Saginaw before I came to Peoria. So, that could be one of the options that we would want to pursue for next year or the following.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great evening. Thank you.
You too. Thanks, Mark. Okay. Approval of minutes for our September fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. May I have a motion and a second on that?
Second.
Are there any discussions or questions? Madam President, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Epstein.
Mr. Blough?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastig?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain. More to care?
Thank you. We are now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the Board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you and to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of equality education for the students of Peoria District 150 schools. The Board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to the goal. Reorganizing, sorry, recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights for free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the Board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that need to be addressed, we will give a staff person, get a staff person to help you. In addition, the Board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. And we realize that three minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have installed, again, a comment box for your convenience. Our Board Secretary will collect those comments after each board meeting to compile and share with the rest of the Board and the superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and... When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has three minutes and no one under 18 years of age may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. I do want to say that at 7 o'clock, we have a budget meeting, a budget hearing, rather, and anyone that is speaking will get your full three minutes. So we'll read, we'll stop, do the budget hearing, and then resume our speaking, okay? First speaker is Gary, Mr. Gary Laskin, Laskinner, did I say that right? Good evening.
Hi. I'm Gary L. Skinner. I am a parent of two sons and a daughter. One of my sons, Gerald, is a student at Jamerson, and I would like to know why they handicap kids are being picked on and having their field trips taken away. They like to go places on buses. The people who's working in this district should not take vehicles home. They use those vehicles and they go shopping on Saturdays and Sundays. Nurse Barry doesn't have a vehicle, teachers don't have a vehicle, principals don't have a vehicle. And I said, it would be less money if you paid mileage than furnished vehicles for the workers. Too much upkeep on them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry for messing up your name, Mr. Skinner.
That's all right.
Thank you. Mr. Sabino Sierra?
Sabino Sierra, 178 South Stanley, on the south side. I'm up to my old, what you call it, investigations. And I see that it's encouraging that we see some of these students that are trying harder to reach a goal, but we still lack discipline in our schools. And this is what I say is most important if we're going to use what we know to put it to good use. And as you know, at the Central game, there was a little trouble. And we can't have that. It's a, gives a bad name to the district and a bad name to the school that participates in it. And also, the school would help if they would teach these, our children, more social graces, which includes, don't clutter up the streets. That's what we're building sidewalks for, for them to get up on the street. I guess they don't understand English when, and can't read because they have ordinances for that, you know? And one of the bad things that happened is when we tried to get them to stay off the streets when they had a big snow, you know? And I say, they can afford designer shoes, you know, but they can't afford snow boots so they can, so they can walk on the sidewalks and when there's the lawn, they can walk on the lawn. So maybe we can look into that and see if we can't do better with our students because one of these days a few of them are going to get killed and then maybe you people will wake up. And...
Thank you, Mr. Sierra. Thank you.
And let's get that five-minute limit for our speeches.
All right. Did you hear that one? I'd like to call the budget hearing to order.
Madam President, I would move that we convene the budget hearing as required by state school code.
So moved. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfmeier?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Costick?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. I'd like to turn that over to Mr. Wilcox. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words on the FY16 budget. As Mr. Cloyd mentioned, the budget hearing today is required by law and is intended to provide a final opportunity to receive comments on the budget prior to adoption by the board later tonight. On August 24th, the board received an overview of the FY16 budget development process and was presented with the FY16 budget. Since that time, the budget has been on public display on the university, or the universities, the district's website, and a hard copy of the budget has been available for public review at the front desk of the administration building. Public notice that the budget was available for public review was provided in the Peoria Journal Star, and we've received no comments on the proposed budget. As discussed with the board in August, we began working on the budget last November and had public discussions on the budget with the board in March, April, May, and July before presenting the proposed budget to the board in August. Budget development was a collaborative effort that involved administrative staff from finance as well as curriculum and other administrative areas. We have put a similar process in place, or similar process and calendar together for the FY17 budget, and I hope that process is also successful. This budget has an all-funds budget of nearly $204 million and an operating budget of $179 million. The total operating budget deficit in this budget was reduced from $12.7 million in FY15 to $8.3 million in FY16. Our largest fund, the education fund, the annual budget deficit, was reduced from $10.3 million to $4.3 million, a budget deficit reduction of $6 million. This is a result of additional state funding and, to a greater extent, planned budget reductions. I mentioned that the budget process was collaborative and involved a number of individuals who contributed to this budget. However, I'd like to point out three key individuals who I think, excuse me, made an exceptional effort. Carl Eamon and Mike McKenzie were instrumental in leading two budget committees that developed the budget reduction options presented to the board and formed the basis for this budget. Their leadership was critical and appreciated. Also, Dave Myers, Director of Buildings and Grounds, was tasked with reducing our building maintenance costs, and I think he did an excellent job with a very difficult task. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any specific questions you may have.
Can the board members have any questions?
I, if you allow, did you have an administration?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I know that every year we put a budget together and we seem to deal with an unreliable source of state funding. And I'm going to vote for this, but my concern is that we need to be prepared to make some more decisions in this year, I think, if the state is unable to get its budget in order and its funding appropriately assigned to the schools. So I would say that the fact that the budget reductions are in place and it reduces the deficit is a good thing, but we're not out of the woods by any means. And it would be my hope that we look at this and say, this is the most we will spend, but it does not require us to spend all of it. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Any other board member? Question? Is there anyone from the public would like to speak on the, on the budget?
Yes, thank you very much. Terry Knapp, 922 West Willshire, Peoria, Illinois. I'd like to mention busing. I think we need to look hard and fast at what we've done the last five years by incorporating Quest School and forcing the north end of Peoria to be bussed all over creation and busing those students from all parts of the city into Quest and then busing those students out of Quest to Peoria Heights for sports such as football and soon-to-be girls' basketball. I think that's a waste of money and a waste of energy and it's nonproductive for the students as far as academics. I think we learned this with Edison. We paid, we paid for Edison for 10 years and finally realized that it didn't work. In the next five years, you have a challenge. You have a five-year commitment with Quest. Hopefully, you'll look at that very closely and decide whether or not that's really working. When they only have 50 seniors and they're supposed to have 75 and they're breaking the law because they're not transferring students from waiting list onto the regular rolls, I mean, I think that this is at every level. We have a FOIA in to discover whether or not they're doing this. I think it's your responsibility to find out whether they're doing this. I think it's an ill-conceived concept, it's an ill-conceived idea, and in the next five years, you have that to deal with. Not to mention the stadium. The stadium is costing you money. I think it should probably be in some way transferred to the Park District and people in the city transfer money around to see that you get what's due you from the Riverboat money and so forth. I think you've let that go way too long. It's been 20 years on Riverboat at $3.5 million a year and you've got, not got a nickel from the city on this. I've talked about this from this podium before, and you seem to just refuse or not communicate with the city at all. Part of that money belongs to the children of this community and you need to see they get what they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Anyone else want to speak on the budget? Is there anything else? Other questions? Do I have a motion?
May I comment on that?
I mean, you have a motion.
First, please. First of all, this board does not administer Quest. Those funds are in their hands and their activities are determined by their board. We do not administer Quest. It is a separate, standalone entity that is required to do that on their own. Number two is, we have discussed the issue of Riverboat money with the city and the city has its own issues, and I do not think they are going to put any money in our coffers for that purpose. And as far as other issues about busing, that is an issue that deals with Quest. We do not make that decision. We do not run that situation. So with that, Madam President, I would move that we close the hearing.
Need a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeier?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Costick?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
I'd like to resume our audience comments. Mrs. Sharon Cruz? We're resuming the audience comments. I'm sorry you didn't hear me. Even though many things from the past still need to be fixed, I believe Dr. Carrot is creating an environment for District 150 to lead in a new direction or maybe even to return to what was good about the past. Many have been saddened to watch 150's music program dwindle almost to nonexistence. If I could jump, I would have jumped for joy when I saw a Facebook request from the Roosevelt Band Director asking the community to donate musical instruments because so many children wanted to be in the band. I was even more pleased to read in the PJ Star that people were responding and that the band had expanded from 22 to 44 after school started, and I think it's gotten even better. Chris Copeland mentioned that the music program has dwindled in the last five years. That's not a surprise. I was chagrined to learn that the longstanding contract with Kidder Music had been dropped. For years, Kidder's had refurbished instruments and passed them on to District 150. I was pleased to learn that Kidder's wants to revive that relationship with the district. I was also pleased to learn that Dr. Carrot wants to revive Roosevelt's status as a performing arts school. Of course, the music program needs to be restored at all middle schools, and I have no doubt that Dr. Carrot already has that on her to-do list. Perhaps if Roosevelt's band is strengthened, we can expect Manuel and Peoria High to reap some of the benefits. On Facebook, Manuel grads reported seeing only drummers marching in the Labor Day Parade and remembered the days that I also remember when the Manuel Band numbered at least 101 mini contests. Also, we remember that before Christmas, we would all open our classroom doors as we heard the Manuel Band led by George Graves coming down the hall playing Christmas music. Many students have been deprived of the feeling of pride that comes from participation in a strong music program. The previous administration, in its desire to encourage kids to go to college, must not have realized how many 150 kids went to college on music scholarships, not to mention how many of our kids have returned to 150 to teach music. Less testing and more of the arts might well be what our students need. At the last meeting, we heard about the time-consuming and expensive glitches in trying to administer NWA tests. And then we hear from the State Board of Education that we should not expect good results from the Park Test. Isn't it time that we consider that there might be something wrong with these tests? How do we know that the tests themselves have passed any validity tests? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Mr. Terry Knapp?
Yes, returning to Mr. Cloyd's comments, I don't think you heard me. I said, I think you closed Woodruff High School five years ago and those students on the north side, Avonville Kingman is the oldest neighborhood association in Peoria, have been bused out of that area for five years. It has not helped those kids achieve one lick better. Matter of fact, it's been a deterrent to their achievement. I said, in five years, you need to consider closing Quest when you're sending my taxpayer money to the Peoria Heights to coach these kids. It's not their money at Quest. It's your money you're giving them that's my money that I'm giving you. You don't have any money. You get it from the taxpayer. That having been said, I gave Dr. Carrot $200 tonight, $100 from Ms. Cruz and myself for grade school band production of instruments. We appreciate Dr. Carrot, what you're doing, Mr. Atkins, what you're doing, and in turn, Stephanie Bowles, the director at Roosevelt Band, which was featured in the paper, tremendous article, great publicity for this district. For five years, this Board of Education has let our fine arts program tank. I was listening to the radio this morning and the people on the radio were talking about how only 16 or 17 members, it was actually 18 because I was at the game, members of the Central Band did any performance at halftime. This is our fine arts high school. I gave you a copy of this. This is the Washington Band Competition, 25-member teams participating. One school had 187 members, that's Washington, 157 members from Morton, 123 members from Pekin, no Peoria schools participating. They can't even muster a band because for five years, we let our grade school program deteriorate, go defunct. The leadership of this district was pathetic when it comes to fine arts. And if you don't realize it, you need to study it. You need to get into it and take a hard look. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knapp. Mr. Charlie Thomas?
Don't start yet. I set my soda down. Okay. By the way, my name is no longer Charlie Thomas. My name is Mr. Kim Mathelicious Thomas. Let's just get that straight.
I was just going by what you put on the cover.
I know. I'm here to talk to, talk about Woodruff, obviously, WCTC, something I'm very proud of. I was a proud employee of Woodruff High School when it was opened, and I am struggling a little bit with what took place in the last couple of weeks. And once again, it's not a struggle about, I know things have to change to help other situations. I know there's an issue at one of our middle schools close to Woodruff, and we have lost our principal and a friend, Mr. Bloomer, to go to Lincoln and try to help that situation out. And I get that. I understand. I also understand that most principals, and I didn't know the middle school principals are going to be here, so hopefully I'm going to get yelled at by them, but most teachers don't need principals. Most teachers teach, they get out in the hallways, they make their lesson plans, and they do all that on their own. But, and there are a lot of good ones over here... But, and there are a lot of good ones over here, it's nice to have that principal in that office when you do need that he or she principal. And I don't know, it's frustrating to me. Woodruff, I've been there, this is my third year. I think they've had four principals in five years. And you guys, the board members, shame on you because some of you don't even come down there and check that out. In fact, I'm not even sure if anyone from the board has been down there. And that's shame on you because it is a great program going on down there. The CTC is outstanding, the hair braiding, the engineering, I'd go on forever. Three minutes won't be enough. I might need a couple more. My point is, you know, we now have lost Dr. Jay, she's at Von Steuben, and we lost Mr. Blumer, two key employees of that building. And it's easy to say that the new people come in and can take over and do, they won't. They'll struggle. You know, it doesn't matter what they did at their other buildings. Are they ready to step forward? You know, we have a person that stepped up, that's been there from day one to move up to the head job. Is she ready? I just say, that building is a challenge. And I've been from Blaine Sumner to Woodruff to Central to Richwoods in my career. This building is a challenge, but it's worth the challenge. And I just don't understand sometimes the moves we have to make. And I say "have to make." I know sometimes you have to do these things, but it just seems to me, we've got a lot of young teachers down there. And this is my last year, you won't have, well, you'll still listen to me, but it won't be as an employee. I've got one year left and I've loved my job in 150. Most of my 35 years have been in this district. Got a lot of young teachers with their eyes just got a lot bigger down there. They relied on Mr. Blumer and Dr. Jay. Now they got to build those new relationships and still teach very challenging kids. Told you it wasn't enough time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Good evening. Last week, I went to the Peoria City Council meeting to observe and to my surprise, in the course of the discussion about the River Trail Apartments, the idea came up that there is excess money in TIF accounts in Peoria that the city council talked about rolling over to help what I consider the ill-advised River Trail Apartments in Riverfront Park. Excess money in TIF accounts? What is this? Some of the other people that I've consulted did a quick and dirty check of the TIF districts. There are nearly 11 TIF districts in the city of Peoria. Apparently, some of these have plenty of excess money, five-figure sums. I'm wondering, why can't District 150 have some of this money? I would urge you to look into this. There is a commission, a committee called the TIF Joint Review Board Members that looks over these TIFs and in fact, Mike McKenzie and Mark Wilcoxen are members of this committee. I think you guys need to look into this. Why should this ill-advised apartment scheme get this money for a private, for-profit development when you guys can use it for the children of this community? I say, look into this. Get your fair share of this money. If it's sitting there empty, I don't know why you are unused at the moment. I don't know why you can't get it. Go for it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Karat, do you have any, or any other board member have any response to audience
It's always enjoyable to hear from the audience and I wanted to thank Mr. Thomas for coming out and sharing his sentiment with us. I commit to you that Woodruff will be successful and it will be monitored and it will be provided the support that it needs or will need. So, thank you. There are a number of strong veteran teachers, that are strong teacher leaders and as you said, they don't really need an administrator to guide them. They are inundated with lots of great experiences, not only on the academic side, but the social-emotional side. So Woodruff is well-positioned and I love your staff. I spoke with them this morning and they're ready to support the changes. So, thanks for coming out and we'll look into the comments, we always do. So thank you for the rest of you that have provided feedback to us.
I wasn't sure who had their hand up first. Go ahead. Ms. Jackson?
Madam President, I am really pleased that we are really working to get the fine arts back into our schools. I would really comment to Dr. Karat that that was one of the first things I talked to her about when she came because what I discovered, I didn't discover this, I've known it a long time, but I did a lot of research while I was in the hospital. A lot of it was because I was concerned about Roosevelt and Roosevelt not being a magnet school anymore and not having fine arts in it because that's how it started out. I also knew that the fine arts has a major impact on academics. How kids perform in school, with fine arts in a school, they do much better. There is no research that I read that didn't say that. So I am so pleased that we are headed that way. I hope that we get the musical instruments. At one point, I thought I heard that there was some music instruments somehow in the building stored away. If they're there, I hope somebody finds them. But I also hope that people will really support our fine and arts program and kids that can't afford instruments, that they be made available in some way so that they can learn the instruments, the singing and all the things that I had when I was going to school. And I know the impact it made on me with Ms. Shivington and Ms. Fuson at Roosevelt. So I'm hoping that we get that started because I'm telling you, everything that I've read and heard said there's a real impact on academics and we need to work at that. So I am pleased that we're back to doing that and hopefully we'll get our schools back to where they were when me and some of you were in schools where we are really having real music coming out of our buildings.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Thomas, I have been down to Woodruff several times and you're absolutely right. There are great, great things going down there. And I just want to share that I think, the first concern I shared with Dr. Karat was that we have to be careful that we don't fix Lincoln at the expense of Woodruff. And she has promised us that she will keep an eye on that and make sure that that doesn't happen. So that, those thoughts have gone through our minds also. And Ms. Hopkins, I was watching the city council meeting last week and the thing I picked up on was that at the end, the mayor made comments to the fact, because some people had said that we hadn't gotten TIF money and it was being taken away. And I shared this with Dr. Karat to check into. He specifically said that at the end of this year, we had $500,000 coming from the Southtown TIF and he said there was another $500,000 from another TIF that I didn't quite catch what it was. So that's what I picked up on. Not that it was money that was going to be given to the River Trail Apartments, but he was saying that we do give that TIF money to the district and they've got $1 million coming this year. So I was very interested in that and asked Dr. Karat to check into that. Thank you.
Ms. Cloy?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. As regards the TIF issue, I've spoken on this thing several times. Because the River Trail area was a park and still is a park at this point, it has created no tax dollars whatsoever. So the city and all the taxing bodies in District 150 included don't receive any tax revenue from that. If it's developed eventually, there may be some TIF money coming out of that. The other thing that I think they referred to in that, and I listened to the entire meeting, and I think one of the points was that under the TIF law, you can move money from an adjacent TIF to another TIF so they can port it from one to the other. And as far as the excess TIF money, that caught my attention too and I've spent some time looking at that. I know that the district, at least two years ago, wrote a letter to the city requesting some return to the district of excess funds from the Southtown Fund. Under the state TIF law, the city can pro rata distribute excess funds before the TIF is terminated. At that point, the city declined to do that. So the points Ms. Wolfmeyer made about that said, in effect, those are coming to an end and then the excess funds come back to the school district and all other taxing bodies pro rata. So the Park District and others that are taxing receive a share of that as well. I would like to see us find a way to have an agreement with the city on future TIFs so that at least a portion of that be provided to us well before the TIF expires in 23 years. We have TIF districts that have been in place for a long, long time and some parts of downtown Peoria will have been covered by a TIF district for almost 50 years by the time some of these expire, which to me is just a little bit excessive. So we are mindful of that. I've spent a good deal of time with them talking about that and they're probably tired of hearing about it from us, but maybe we're starting to get through. So, thank you for your comments on that.
Okay. Well, since we're on fine arts, I'd like to personally thank you on behalf of the board and myself, Ms. Cruz, for your donation that says that you're putting your money where your mouth is. And also, Mr. Knapp, thank you so much. And just get other people to bring in those dollars. Thank you.
Another 100 people, 10,000 dollars.
That's right. We'll be there before we know it. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the introduction of middle school principals. Superintendent Karat?
Dr. Bell?
All right. Good evening, board members. Want to take a moment now to bring before you the wonderful, wonderful principals of the middle schools and a couple of K-8 schools that I have the honor and privilege to work with every day. These individuals are going to come before you and articulate their goals, just as the high school's principals did a couple of weeks ago. And so, without any further ado, please, when I call your name, come on up. From Calvin Coolidge Middle School, Mr. Mick Swanson. From Glen Oak Community Learning Center, Ms. Magnolia Branscombe. From Robert A. Jamison School, Principal, Ms. Karen Ball. From Lindberg Middle School, Ms. Sue Molehi. From Mark Bills Middle School, Principal, Ms. Laura Rogers. Roland Akers Middle School, Principal, Mike Barber. Roosevelt Magnet Middle School, Principal, Doug Atkins. Sterling Middle School, Principal, Joe Gallo. Von Steuben Middle School, Principal, Dr. Cindy Janovitz, Dr. Jay. And last, but certainly not least, Washington Gifted Middle School, Principal, Mr. Dave Foles. Four of them are going to share with you their specific smart goals and the other six are going to share with you the strategies and methods they have implemented or will implement to bring about change in their schools.
Good evening. My name is Laura Rogers. I'm the principal at Mark Bills. My goal, based on the fall 2015 NWA math assessment data, will demonstrate a growth in the average RIT scores as compared to the winter 2015 NWEA math assessment. The student growth rating in math will be determined by the percentage change in the school's average math goals. And our target state is 2%. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Janovitz, Principal of Von Steuben Middle School. Based on the fall 2015 NWA reading assessment data, the school will demonstrate growth in the average RIT scores as compared to the winter 2015 NWA reading assessment data. The student growth rating is in reading will be determined by the percent change in the school's average RIT scores, reading RIT. And that is, excuse me, a target of 2%.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Barber. I'm the principal of Roland Akers Middle School. And during the 2015-2016 school year, our school will improve its overall attendance rate by 2% based on the 2014-2015 data. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Magnolia Branscombe. I am the principal of Glen Oak Learning Center and one of our goals this year is to decrease our suspension rate by 10%.
Thank you.
Doug Atkins, Roosevelt Magnet School. We're going to be implementing BIST as a means by which to decrease suspensions and referrals in our school. BIST stands for Behavior Intervention Support Team. BIST picks up where PBIS leaves off. It helps students stay on track with behavior. It uses a common language and a common philosophy. It takes into consideration the social and emotional health of the children. It reduces referrals and suspensions and it gets students back to their regular seats with a minimal disruption to their learning.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mick Swanson, the proud principal at Calvin Coolidge. And to piggyback on what Doug said, we're looking at a lot of the social-emotional as well as academic challenges our students face. And we're using BIST and PBIS just like everybody else here is. But some of the specific ideas are, we are on a weekly basis having initiatives and ideas for students with no referrals or a minimum number of referrals and we're giving them rewards and incentives that way. We're also trying to reach out to our parents and having parent communication and required parent communication when we have those students that face tough challenges. As a grade-level team and as an administrative team, we're bringing those parents in to get them on our side and know that we're all on the same playing field. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Karen Ball and I'm the principal of Jamison. And one of my goals is to reduce referrals by 10% and we're going to be doing that by, we're going to be doing that by implementing PBIS, second step, and by providing engaging activities in the classroom so the students are engaged and active and want to stay in the classroom instead of venturing out into other areas of the building. So it's, we are, our PBIS is being modified for our students because if you look at PBIS, because our students are at a lower level than most students, we are looking at our students and seeing what PBIS incentives and what we can do to modify it so our students understand the strategies of PBIS and are buying into it. And they are doing, we are doing a very good job of that right now.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sue Molehi, principal at Lindberg Middle School. And to support our goal of reducing major referrals by 10%, we have implemented the Olveas Bully Prevention Program. Olveas is a program that's intended to change the school culture and the major component to this is in dealing, is addressing how teachers respond to problem behaviors. They use the on-the-spot intervention which addresses the student who is engaged in the inappropriate behavior, but also the student who is the recipient of the inappropriate behavior, acknowledging that the behaviors aren't correct and how we can change those behaviors. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joe Gallo, principal of Sterling. And a couple of the interventions that we're putting in place to improve attendance in our building, we have our council and administrative team talk to individual students once they, if they miss three unexcused absences. We also have put in advisory to start our building, or start our days off on a daily basis to build relationships between our faculty and our students. Each week, our faculty will be doing some progress monitoring and one of the topics of discussion will be student attendance. In addition, we are also putting in ceremonies and celebrations to recognize students who exemplify good attendance on a quarterly basis. And there's one more that I had. I apologize. Oh, students who miss two consecutive days of attendance, their teachers, their homeroom teachers, contact the administrative team, council and secretary to, one, communicate that fact with us and also expect it to make a phone contact home. Thank you.
Hi. I guess I need to boot this up from everybody, my colleagues here. My name is Dave Foles, principal of Washington Gifted Middle School. And our school goal is dignity, respect, achievement for all. And since we do poll from all the students across the district that attend our school, there are some gaps that do at times happen in the learning. So we've, a majority of our students succeed in subject areas. learning. So we've, a majority of our students succeed in subject areas, but we still have a program designed to help those students fill the gaps. And those students are selected on these criteria in order to fill these gaps. Certainly, the NWA data shows the need in content area. Our classroom teacher sees that need on a pre- and post-test performance. And our in-school intervention is implemented by our intervention team. And then, based on teacher recommendations, the chronic amounts of missing assignments all lead to a successful opportunity for our students. And we're working on that very hard. Also, if I can add this, this sheet, as you notice behind you, the board, and I do apologize, Mrs. Kostick, it looks like that W's already to fall, so if it does, please don't blame me. Again, I'd like to point out these boards and invite you to Washington Gifted Middle School of Parent University on Thursday, October 15th. We're planning a great evening. I look forward to having my team join me here at the next board meeting. I believe that's Tuesday, October 13th. And we'll announce some of the workshops that we've been planning. For now, just a little plug here. The event is from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on the 15th. The theme is barbecue and a blast, evidently. Excellent, Mr. Copeland. Because amongst other things happening that night, we're excited to help the district launch the new Peoria Public Schools phone app for parents and students. So we certainly hope to see you and members of the community at Washington Gifted, October 15th. Thank you very much.
Nice plug, Mr. P. Appreciate that. And leaders, just a quick comment. Just wanted to let you know you're appreciated. You're being lauded this evening for your passion regarding educating the whole child, Mrs. Sierra. I hope you're hearing this. So we're focused not only on academics, but also on behavior, social-emotional, we call it. And so, thank you for believing in defying the odds. And we can, we have, and also your belief in the actualization of realizing our district's vision. So thank you so much. And you're an essential piece in moving our district forward. It's one of those key essentials, one of the five essentials, which is effective leadership. And you're illustrating that very well this evening. We're proud of you. Thanks for coming out this evening. I would also like to thank you as well. I know even coming here makes for a very long day. And most of you all have very long days anyway. And I know you have a tough job, but you're up to it. But I just want to say thank you for, you know, the hours you put in, the time, the commitment, the patience and all that, for not just the students and parents, but also the staff. And, you know, not forgetting where you came from. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
Thank you. For some of you, I know you'll be going back to your building, so.
Okay. Senate Bill 100 update?
Thank you, President Ross. This is actually a very quick update regarding this new bill. It's actually a very new bill. It's called Senate Bill 100. It will require sweeping changes in the use of punitive school discipline practices across the state of Illinois. Senate Bill 100 passed both houses of the Illinois Legislature May of this year, and the governor has actually signed the bill. The bill requires all school districts, including charter schools and Chicago, to make significant changes in the way they suspend and expel students. And it forces districts to implement these changes by September 15th of next year. This bill has amended, or is actually asking us, it's amended the school code. It's asking us to make changes concerning student discipline policies. And there's some things that affect the Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee. It's asking school districts to create a memorandum of understanding with local law enforcement agencies that clearly defined the law enforcement's roles in schools. It also mandates and stipulates what a written expulsion or suspension decision must include. Board members may not institute zero tolerance. This law also talks about when out-of-school suspensions of three days or less may be used. Also, it provides guidance around when out-of-school suspensions of longer than three days, expulsions and disciplinary removals to alternative schools may be used. So it provides all these guidance. Let's see. It talks about, provides direction around the opportunity for students to make up work, professional development, on the adverse consequences of school expulsion and the justice system involvement, mandates effective classroom management strategies, things including cultural responsive discipline, and so forth. So Reverend Butler and Mrs. Jackson, co-chairs of the Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee, under their leadership, the committee will further explore Senate Bill 100, along with its implementation in our district. And we would like, they would like to invite you to a meeting on October 8th at 5:00 in this building, in the media room, to learn more about Senate Bill 100 and also have a conversation with them. If you're interested in attending, please contact the board secretary, Mrs. Dixon.
Either Ms. Jackson or Reverend Butler have any comments on that?
We just want to make sure that the community is greatly involved. And we are collaborating and bringing understanding of this bill through our standard policy committee. So Mr. Cloyde and Mrs. Kostick really are kind of first lead. And then, those things will be brought to the Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee. And that committee is what it is. It's parents, teachers, and community stakeholders. And by this law, this committee has to address this bill. It will be priority for this committee, starting in October and into probably February of next year. We don't want to be last minute passing through what needs to be done, but to give administration ample time, as well, as you heard it mentioned, this will involve our Peoria law enforcement and others. So we really want to get started, first by bringing understanding, and that is what the October 8th meeting is all about. We've already had this bill reviewed by our legal counsel, and we've gotten a response back from them. So there's been some preliminary work, but these two committees, the Policy Committee and the Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee, will be working together to make sure we're ready for August 2016 as it relates to discipline measures, procedures, and policy for District 150.
Ms. Jackson?
I think this is the ideal time for parents to really get involved in the education of your children, to really get involved with what's going to come out of Senate Bill 100 and what is going to be our marching orders, but what your marching orders are. So we're hoping that those of you that have children in school, that you might be grandparents raising your children, that you come out and hear what the bill says, what your responsibilities are, what we intend to do, and work with us to make sure that we put everything in place that we are legally responsible for doing. So we look forward to seeing you on October the 8th.
I would just like to say that we're not starting from ground zero with this. A few years back, there was a statute handed down to us by the state indicating that we needed to develop a Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee. I chaired that committee for five years. And that's, and it was also to study discipline and how to manage the discipline in the school districts. That was the major caveat for that committee. We do have a discipline policy, and hopefully, Policy Committee will be looking at that, looking at how we can revise that to meet the current statute. And I'm looking forward to having something in place, as you said, by the beginning of the year.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Adler?
I just want to make note, and I've discussed with several board members and Dr. Carratt, that as we kind of wade into this, it would be good to have a visual representation of our discipline-related data from the past few years as a backdrop to how we approach this. And I know Mr. Cloyde especially has put together some tables in the past, and the data is really telling about, you know, the need for us to establish an expectation early. And if we don't, how those problems can compound themselves over the years with the kids. So I think it's, I look forward to a robust policy discussion and a review of that data. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, just, Mrs. Kostick.
Just very, very briefly, I think as we move forward with this, it's important to have a clear understanding is that these are mandated by the state. We, there are a lot of changes that are going to take place, and they are totally out of our hands, but we have to comply with them. So these changes, the changes that are being mandated is that, you know, I just need you to understand that there are changes that you may not agree with, but we are mandated to do them. So I'm just kind of giving you a fair warning that when they come out, you say, oh, yeah, she said that changes were going to come. And they are going to be different, different than the way we do business now. Thank you.
We're going to have to be creative and think outside the box.
Exactly. Opportunities. Okay. Peoria Pathways to Prosperity, who's presenting on that?
Mr. Baker Brent.
Hello.
Welcome.
Good evening, President Ross, Dr. Carratt, board members. I thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening. And please excuse my casual dress, despite knowing better. I volunteered to help a friend move this evening, and of course, it took longer than I expected to get done with that and get over here. So just a very brief overview of the pathways.
Could you give us your name?
Oh, sorry about that. Brent Baker. I'm with the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council. And I'm the coordinator for Peoria Pathways to Prosperity. And so, Pathways to Prosperity is a national initiative that has been looking to take hold here in Peoria for about a year or so, and has been guided by an advisory board made up of community volunteers, the City of Peoria, the Peoria Area Chamber of Commerce, the CEO Council, and a number of post-secondary educators, and the Teachers Union with Mr. Atkins Dutrow representing them. And just this summer, the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council received a grant from the American Federation of Teachers, from their Innovation Fund, for $60,000 to help fund this position and to really get Peoria Pathways off the ground and running. So I've been, it's my fifth week on the job, and we have a few initiatives I'd like to tell you about this evening in regards to what we have on the horizon. So first of all, with the Career Cruising Platform that exists in the district already, we have purchased a software package called Inspire that connects to that Career Exploration Platform and actually provides work-based learning opportunities, or connects students to work-based learning opportunities right here in the region. So it kind of functions as an Indeed.com. If you know what that is, it's a job board, but basically for work-based learning for students. So it is my charge to put together a committee of people to guide this and really bring regional employers on board to create and offer work-based learning opportunities for District 150 students. And so my position is focused specifically on District 150 going forward. And we're looking at piloting this Inspire software here at District 150 and really trying to create some best practices. And then eventually it will roll out on a regional scale and be available to all schools that use Career Cruising in the five county region. So I have a committee of about 15 individuals representing regional employers, manufacturers, healthcare employers, post-secondary administrators, district administrators, District 150 administrators, to really talk about how we can message this Inspire platform and bring regional stakeholders on board and help students with work-based learning opportunities. The second one is, as we go forward with work-based learning, we will be also looking at creating a committee to help the district support the expansion and the alignment of CTE programming within the district. So also offering more dual credit at the schools, at the high school level as well. And to do that, we also are working on, we were invited to Chicago for a two-day conference in mid-October, and Susan Gersnitch will be attending with us. We have a small team of about seven members, which also includes employers and post-secondary educators to go to Chicago for a two-week workshop, or two-day workshop, to focus on how we can create a model pipeline for IT careers and information system careers. So for two days, we'll be kind of really working to see what are the assets here and what are the easy steps we can take to kind of create a model and then bring it back to Peoria and try to implement that. So those are the things that are in the immediate future as we go forward. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Ms. Kostick?
Yes, Brent. Could you please expound a little bit more on the expansion of your dual credit program?
So that committee meeting is October 21st, and it's a committee comprised of, I think Susan Gersnitch is on that committee as well, and several post-secondary administrators. So we have representatives from ICC, from their College Career Wellness Department, as well as their Dual Credit Department, and representatives from all of their schools. So the School of Agriculture, Industrial Technology, as well as Business Hospitality, so representatives from all the departments, to really try to work to align curriculum here within the district. So when students, you know, are taking CTE courses or dual credit courses here, when they get to ICC, they are prepared with the expectations that ICC has. But then also trying to address or figure out what will be the easiest steps we can take to create more dual credit programming. So what classes that could we offer at Woodruff that maybe are offered now but aren't necessarily dual credit? So what do we have to do to get those, maybe it's a professional development issue for the teachers? What do we have to do to get those opportunities for teachers so they have the credentials to be a dual credit certified teacher? And so I'll be convening a committee to kind of work on solutions for those problems.
Any other questions? Mr. Cloyde?
Not a question, but I guess an observation. I believe Peoria was one of five cities to win one of the AFT grants, Mr. Atkins Dutrow. Is that correct?
Yep.
And I believe we were the smallest of the five cities.
We were up there with, you know, San Diego, New York, but we stood proudly.
And I understand you represented us there and did a great job.
Yes, and Paula Davis as well sat on a panel. She kind of setting up getting all of this together, but things are going extremely well. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for your efforts and also from Ms. Davis as well. But that's a terrific opportunity, and it's a rarity. There's, like I say, there's only five communities in the United States that received one of those grants from the American Federation Teachers, so. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Wilcoxen, you want to talk about the Salary Compensation Report?
This is a annual report that we present to the board. It's part of a law that we submit to.
The board at a regular board meeting. After the presentation, then we will forward this report to the State Board of Education. It was a collaborative effort between the Finance Department and the HR Department here.
Okay. So this report will be listed on the website?
It'll be on the website and submitted to the State Board of Education.
Right, okay. Any questions on that report? Okay. So the receive and file, do you need a vote? Do you need a, okay. Then the proposed expenditures, over $2,500? No questions. I have Mr. Wilcoxen on that one. Okay. Report of request under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such report. Dr. Carratt?
Thank you, President Ross, board. Since our last board meeting on September 14th, we received two new Freedom of Information requests. Of these new requests, none were filled. And under pending requests, there were three pending. Two requests were filled. And as of, we have a running total of 2,150 pending, two requests were filled, and as of, we have a running total of $2,155.39 in terms of cost for four-year requests. Thank you.
Okay. Consent agenda? Mr. Cloyes?
Thank you, Madam President. The consent agenda this evening consists of the following items. Number one, gifts to the school district, this meeting totaling $9,272.83, and year to date, $42,041.53. The proposed actions, the following donations be accepted and letters of appreciation sent to the donors. School supplies, $50 for English Lutheran Church to Glen Oak. T-shirts valued at $500 by Dan O'Day to Manuel Academy. Staff luncheon valued at $500 by Dan O'Day to Manuel Academy. Boys' basketball expenses and water valued at $5,075 by Patricia Kroland to Manuel Academy. Snacks for Glow Run valued at $47 by Hy-Vee. School and sanitary supplies valued at $700 by RLI employees to Mark Bills. School and sanitary supplies valued at $1,900 by RLI employees to Mark Bills, and a $500 donation by Salem Lutheran Church to Thomas Jefferson, and our thanks for that. Item number two, the payment of bills. Item number three, the Human Resources report, the proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, and discharge of an employee. Item number four, payment for travel. Item number five, the 2015-2016 application for recognition of schools. Proposed action is that the 2015-2016 application for recognitions, recognition of schools be approved for each of the schools of the district. Item number six, approval of amended purchasing policies. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the following policy and related administrative procedure, 4:65, review and approval of purchases and travel, and that the Board of Education approve the following revised policies and applicable administrative procedures, 4:50, payment procedures, 4:55, use of credit and procurement cards, and 4:60, purchases. Item number seven, approval for sale of surplus property. Proposed action by the Board of Education is that the Board of Education approve this as amended and declare the following surplus items as surplus property and authorize the chief financial officer provide public notice and offer for sale said property at public auction to the highest bidder. This includes a number of vehicles, some of whom are in various states of repair and operability, but you may find some of them of interest, and I would encourage you to keep your eyes open for this exciting auction. Sounds like the Channel 47 auction, doesn't it? Field trip, number eight, field trip approval, the PHS senior trip. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for seniors from Peoria High School per board policy 6:240. Students will travel to Gruney, Illinois on May 14, 2016, participating in the annual senior class trip, overnight event for high school seniors hosted by Great America. No student will be denied participation for inability to pay, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Cloyes.
You're welcome.
Are there any items any board member would like to pull for a separate vote? We'll say separate vote, not necessarily discussion, but separate vote. Okay? Okay? Can I get a motion?
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just a second, discussion. Ms. Wolfmeier?
Just a quick question on the Peoria High senior trip. Is there a way that kids have to earn the right to go on that trip or can lose the right to go on that trip? And are they having trouble finding enough adults to go when you consider it's probably a couple hundred kids?
Right. Ms. Johnson?
No, actually, we have more adults that want to go than kids. For some reason, adults love reliving their childhood. So that's definitely not the issue. And then, yes, for kids who, the way Mr. Elliott explained it, right now, everybody can go, but he let people, he let the kids know that it's a privilege to be able to go. So if they're constantly disrupting school, they could lose that. Last year, once he told seniors that, they really stepped up because they wanted to go, so we didn't have any issues.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Not a, well, a question and a comment. On item number five, Dr. Karat, could you just explain the issue of recognition of schools, what the purpose of that is?
Yeah, it's like item number four, it's something that we have to do annually, and there are three important questions. One has to do with all of the principals have taken the, have passed that module to evaluate teachers. And the other one, the other question has to do with the change in evaluation instrument, and that we have those ratings, those four ratings. And the last one has to do with, those are the two biggest ones. And once we, once we have confirmed that, then the board has to, it's an annual, it's an annual ritual.
Right.
And then tonight, once it's approved, I will get online and make contact with the state for each individual building that our board has approved, that each building is up to par and will be good to go. Right now, we're pending, but the deadline is the 30th.
Thank you. As regards item number six, Ms. Kostic and Mr. Wilcoxen and Mr. Redberg and others have contributed to this process of revising our purchasing policies. It's taken several months, and this came about as a result of several issues, but I think 6:65 really puts in place a much more business-like procedure, which starts out with approval before purchase orders are issued, and then leading up to the point of the item or service being delivered, and then finally being approved for payment. Our system was a little bit upside down, and this corrects that. And then, as a result of that, there were changes in the other three policies as well to conform to that, and that took us a little bit of time to get those right. So I believe, Mr. Wilcoxen, this was to be implemented starting fairly soon, based on what we could do in our software in Skyward, is that correct?
Yes, we're scheduled to implement this October 1st.
And you're good with that, so.
We're good with that.
And everybody's happy that it's been done, I'm sure. Well, I guess the point here is that this was an issue that dealt with large purchases that could be committed to by the board without really having the discussion and evaluation beforehand, and now that policy is in place. I think there's some, either professional development training or communication that would be necessary, that people understand this. This is not an intent to get in the way of getting business done, it's to make sure that the board has a chance to evaluate large purchases and commitments before they are made, so. Ms. Kostic, would you care to add anything to that, or you're good with that? Okay. So I would ask you to look that over, I know that that's attached to the board packet. It will be placed online, as well as part of our board policy documents, within the next probably 48 hours after approval. So those are all available online. So thank you for that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeier?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyes?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Seven ahs, one here.
We have the deliberation portion of the agenda. Expulsions, with the expulsion being held in abeyance. Who's going to read?
The expulsion with the expulsion held in abeyance listed on the report dated September 28, 2015 be approved as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeier?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyes?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Revocation of expulsions held in abeyance.
The proposed action is that the revocations of expulsions held in abeyance listed on the report dated September 28, 2015 be approved as presented.
Second.
Did you call the roll?
Okay, I found this on the web. Let's go.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeier?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyes?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Revocation of board probation.
The proposed action is that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated September 28, 2015 be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeier?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyes?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Next is the budget resolution. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Whereas, the Board of Education of Peoria, School District 150, County of Peoria, State of Illinois calls to be prepared for a tentative budget, and the Secretary of the Board has made the same conveniently available to the public for public inspection at least 30 days prior to the action, final action. And whereas a public hearing has been held as such budget on the 28th of September, notice that, to, notice of said hearing was given at least 30 days prior thereto required by law, and all other legal requirements have been complied with. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education as follows. That the budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and the expenditures from each be and the same is hereby adopted as the budget of this school district for the 2015-2016 fiscal year. I have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Any further questions, comments? I know we talked about it before. Anything? Nothing? I have a motion.
We did.
Oh, do, oh, yes, okay. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeier?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyes?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Presentations and suggestions by board members, Ms. Kostic, I believe you have something.
On the Peoria High ribbon cutting, as you may know, the opening of the new soccer field at Peoria High School was slightly delayed due to a need for the contractor to address field issues. After several days of watering, some receding, and other changes paid for by the public building commission and the contractor, we were given temporary occupancy on August 31st. Since then, the Peoria High soccer team has hosted five games at the new facility, the first being a 3-2 win over Limestone on Labor Day, yay! Track and field, baseball, and softball teams will open their seasons at the new complex in the spring. Next week, on Thursday night, October 8th, we will hold a special ribbon cutting ceremony prior to the start of the last home soccer game. The Lions play Urbana that evening at 4:30 p.m. Peoria High's baseball, softball, track, and field and soccer teams will be present. We will begin the short ribbon cutting ceremony at 4 o'clock. And for those of you that will be in attendance, just keep in mind that your parking will be on either North Street or in the parking lot that's where the swimming pool is, was, okay? Secondly, my announcements are, I know everybody sees these little cards, you know what, these are not, these are not our prompts. These are, these are our little cards to tell, that remind us constantly of why we are here and why we do what we do. And it's a compliment, a compliment of our illustrious presence, to let us know why we're here, as if we don't know, but anyway. We are here to employ a superintendent, to clarify district goals, to connect with community, to monitor performance, and to take responsibility for ourselves.
Thank you.
That's some of the reasons we are here.
So tune in next board meeting for a few more why we're here. We'll get it together. I'm just, I'm just learning, right? Okay, any reports by board committees? We, oh, you already reported on your particular one, so. Yeah, and as was mentioned earlier, on October 8th, the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee, so right after the ribbon cutting, need to come on back over, come over here for that meeting. One thing I want to say, and it escaped me before we got to this part, was to just say thank you to Mr. Wilcoxen for the excellent work that you have done with this district in terms of our finances. The budget that we just adopted began many months ago, and you mentioned some of the other individuals that were a part of that with you throughout the staffing of the district, all the schools participating, and perhaps it was just for that season that you were given to us. And so I'm just grateful for that, and say best wishes, my prayers and thoughts go with you in your retirement.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, we were going to kind of get to that, but thanks for starting it off. I'll just say, from my perspective, Mr. Wilcoxen, I've always loved working with you.
Oh, thank you.
You took all my jokes and, and as I said, I really enjoy working with you, and I really am, I'm actually sad to see you go.
Oh, thank you. Well, if I could add, first of all, I asked legal counsel to review his contract and see if we can actually let go of him. That's a joke, Mark.
I actually thought that, I was going to get that question.
Yeah, well, I thought about it too, but that's, that's a joke.
I've been buying him lunch for a week.
Don't admit that. So, well, I'm really frankly disappointed to see you leave, and I hope you have gained as much from this with the board as I think we all have with your work and experience. We thank you very much for that. And also, as a comment, we have our next policy committee meeting on October 14th at 9:30 here in the district office, so. And I won't be there. And you will be missed, but we'll carry on.
Well, let me say, you'll be welcome to come back to any, and you can also sit on a committee as well. You know, any committee you'd like to sit on.
Actually, you can volunteer.
I'd like to add, I'd like to add to Mark. Mark, it's been a pleasure working with you. You know, you were always that kind of laid-back person that came through with a bang in giving us the information that we so asked for. Hate to see you go, was surprised, but you know what? You know when to say when. And I appreciate everything that you've brought to us as a board. You've always provided information to us that was exact. That's enough said. But congratulations, we wish you the best as you move forward in retirement, or another career, or whatever.
No more career. Well, thank you, I've enjoyed working here with the board and with my colleagues, and I appreciate all the kind words.
Anybody else? What are you thinking? That's your cue.
Move for adjournment.
Second. Thank you.
I'm sorry, say a second.
Thanks, Jackson. We don't have to call the roll for that, I don't guess.
Oh, thank you. Well, I'll make sure, we'll meet again at the beer club.